Good morning, everybody. Welcome back to the Swanee County Board of Accounting and Commissioner Workshop for August the 3rd. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation. Commissioner Mollie, do the pledge if you'll stand.
Most gracious turn of Father God, we come now, God, to thank you for how you've blessed us and watched us and cared for us all last night while we slumming and slept. We thank you, God, wake up to a new day, dear God, feeling refreshed and rejuvenated. We thank you, God, for allowing us to be here, dear God. We thank you for this board, dear God, to handle the situation and circumstances that come before this board. Ask of God, you're blessed with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Ask of God, continue to bless every heart that's here today, oh God, bless every home that's represented, and God bless everyone that's come out today, dear God. God prepare you, just look on us, dear God, and continue to have your way in our lives. We give you the praise and the glory in Christ, we pray. Amen.
Congratulations, Mr. Shute, of the United States of America, and to you, we welcome the voice of one nation under God, and in the visible, we will be ready to do justice for our own.
Yeah, it's pretty smooth there. We ought to work more. Hey, good morning, everybody. We're going to start off with what we call outside agency requests this morning. I'd ask you to keep it to three minutes or less. If you don't mind, you can speak if you'd like. You don't have to if you don't want to, and we will, we're not going to discuss each one as we go. We're going to wait till we get done, and then the board will go over what we're going to do. So first off, let me ask, has anybody got something they need to get out of here for first, so I can rearrange how this list is? If you've got something important to go to and you want to be first, let me know. If not, we'll go down the list. First up would be A R C, Comprehensive Community Services.
Good morning.
Good morning. Last time I broke this, I'll be very careful. I don't have much to say. I've met some of you and some of you I have not, so I wanted to come up and tell you personally, thank you for the support that you give us. We are the Arc North Florida. We had changed our names a couple of times, just so you're not confused who we are, and I would have really appreciated as much as the individuals that we serve, if you would continue our support with our agency. Since COVID has ended, we are starting to get more and more referrals, which is very exciting. We've actually moved out of our main building, being the administration, and turned that building into all-service provision. So I would invite any of you to come by and tour and take a look at what we've done for the individuals, and this service is very important. I won't keep your time, but it allows families to go to work and participate in this community while we take care of their loved ones, and I think that's just essential. But anyway, I just wanted to ask you to please consider again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Disabled American Veterans.
Mr. Shute.
Hearthstone Botanical Gardens.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Judy Monday. What we would like this year as a continuing support is to go on expanding our children's garden, and we have several areas. We would like to develop a pet memorial garden, which we would be with rocks and paint and pet names, and we're going to do it in a spiral, as in throwing a rock into a creek and it just keeps rippling. So it has potential to keep on growing forever. And then we want to do a, we have, with homeschool groups, we want to do a farm-to-table type of gardening, which would include building raised beds, soil, seeds, and it would be, for instance, it would be like planting potatoes, fertilizing them, hailing them, fertilizing them, harvesting them, make potato chips. So you get farm-to-table and train kids to do that kind of thing, but it would all be done, excuse me, on our property. And then the other thing is we're considering developing teamwork for making micro landscapes, which would be individuals but small groups, and we would be using pottery, soil, pinecones, items that, ferns that grow in the gardens, and this would teach design and it would also encourage creativity. So that would be an ongoing type of project. Also, we want to develop four seasonal scavenger hunts. So as people arrive at the gardens, we have the scavenger hunt there. They can pick it up, they can do it on their own. It's not, it's not a guided event. It's a self-guided event, and it just gets people, kids and adults, in touch, more in touch with what we have here in North Florida, which is what our botanical gardens are, Florida-friendly and natives that will grow in this area. And then finally, we have an area that's called the Al Cove, and it goes, there's a bridge that goes over a small pond, and on the other side of that bridge is quite flat, which is not characteristic of the rest of the gardens, and we thought we would like to develop a bocce ball court. So there's a variety of things going on, but we're five years old, young, but we are going forward, and your help is very much appreciated. And you're all welcome to come out. Seriously, we're not that far, 20 minutes from live.
Are you a nonprofit organization?
Nonprofit organization, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Historical Commission. Good morning.
Morning. Eric Musgrove, Chairman. We were all here late yesterday. I will waive my time unless you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Hooked on Heroes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good.
All right. I wanted to say thank you for all the support I've had from you all the past year, and this year, we've requested an increase. We greatly appreciate it. If you could, consider it in your decision, because our cost factors are going up quite a bit, and our veterans are coming in numbers. We're getting a larger and larger number every year, and we're growing quite extensively. So, but I would like to say again, thank you all for all your support before.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ron, real quick, how many were at the last fishing trip?
How many did you have at the last?
We took 170 the last time, but we had a, had to change one weekend, so when you have to change a weekend, you go down. We normally take between 250 and 300.
Wow.
And we do it twice a year.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Police Athletic League.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board, Mr. Scott. I'm standing in for Terry Brinson, who is, which is the, who is the PAL chairman, which could not be here this morning, but we're just here to thank you for your past support, and we are asking for a slight increase this year because of the impact that we are making with the kids at the Police Athletic League. Last year, our female cheerleading program is taking off, and our female cheerleading group went to a state championship at Daytona Beach. It was very expensive, but the exposure that these young people are getting when they go off and see other groups from around the state, you know, is invaluable. And last week, we had some former cheerleaders from Swanee High School to come to the gym, which was not a PAL event, but PAL helped sponsor them, and they had a three-day cheerleading camp. And to see these young people come out and participate in this, you know, is just, you just need to come out and see it. You know, I just don't have words to explain the impact that they are making on these kids. And the overall mission of PAL is to keep young people, you know, out of the criminal justice system by mentoring them and molding them and building character that will keep them in school and keep them out of trouble, and we know the expense of maintaining a person that once they get into the system or even get into prison. So the investments that we're making upfront, I think it is well worth the investment that we are making today. So we want to thank you for all your support in the past, and we ask you to our fund now requests this year. And do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mr. Ford.
Mr. Perk.
Mr. Ford, you speak on your absolute program, any summer programs for your kids?
Yes, the summer program, the summer youth program is one of our hallmark programs that we, that we run every year. It's a six-week program where it's an educational component. We have about 45 kids in that program, and they come in and we take them on weekly field trips to the pool, to the bowling alley, to the roller skating rink, to the movies in Valdosta, and we have agencies, you know, from around the county to come in to support them, the fire department, the SWAT, and other agencies come in and kind of give them demonstration on it. And we usually have an end-of-year program every year, and just to see these kids to come up and explain what this means to them, and we usually have a little video slideshow, which I was late getting, and I will send it to you, and this picture is worth 1,000 words, so I will send you a copy, each of you commissioners a copy of that video, so you can see what they did last summer, and we look forward to doing that each and every year. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Swanee County Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, gentlemen. Hillary Cannon with the Swanee County Chamber. I'm going to be brief, as everybody kind of is this morning. First, I just want to start by saying thank you. You guys have come to more of our events in the past year, and we greatly appreciate it. We really could not function in the way that we do without the support of the county commission. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any for us. I do also want to say thank you for your help in securing Representative Shove and Senator Simon on our top floor. We have seen increased foot traffic because of that. There are citizens that are utilizing them and speaking with them, so thank you for your help on that. We think it's a big win for Swanee County. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
We kind of know what the routine is.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Hillary. Swanee Valley Four Seas. Swanee Valley Genealogical Society.
Good morning.
You look like you're moving like I am. I got a kink in my neck.
Well, I got a kink in my hips. What can I say? Anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for you all's continued support and invite you all to come over to the library. I don't know if any of you all have been over to
I have not.
To see what we have. I think you'd be surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. United Way, Swanee Valley. Vivid Visions. Welborn Community Association. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
She's coming.
It takes a minute.
That's all right. I wouldn't have made it out of the chair with some high heels on.
So, good morning. I first off want to say thank you guys for all of your community's support, and yeah, so just to touch base, you know, we opened here in 1994, and so we've been here a little 30 years, serving the community, helping with our domestic violence survivors in the Swanee County area. So far, this is who we've served this year. We've served 123 people came into our shelter, and these are new numbers. These aren't past participants who are still coming for counseling or anything like that. We had 97 people served in outreach, and we had 1,630 hotline calls, and we had about 158 unmet requests, which our shelter was just full at the time, which meant we had to refer to another local shelter. So with that being said, with our grant, we are required to match for our community funds, and with that, we really get out there and help as far as that goes, spread awareness in our community, especially within our school systems. We work really closely, as far as we can, with the private schools and the public school systems, and of course, it helps with any emergency needs with our survivors, so absolutely. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me.
How many can you handle at a time?
In our shelter?
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, we can take about 19. After that, we're required to have two people on staff per DCF requirements, so.
How full do you stay?
Usually at about 19. Yeah, really. Sometimes we get down, I think the lowest is maybe 16.
So pretty much full all the time?
Pretty much full of the time, and again, we work closely with like Stephanie at the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, so we're constantly out there in the community and everything like that, helping as much as we can.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welborn Community Association.
My name is Meso Martin. I'm the president of the Welborn Community Center. First of all, I'd like to appreciate, to tell you how much we appreciate you guys for your support throughout the years, and we asked for an increase this year, and the reason why we did ask for an increase, we took on the project of Toys for Tots this year, and that's for the entire county. So we took on that project, and we, at the time, we took it on, we did not have a building to house the toys, so we proceeded into looking for a building, and we ran across a building in Welborn there, which is the old Blakelow Building. And in this building, we found out that it needed a lot of repairing and stuff and toilets and everything, but this not only serviced the Welborn Association, we done this for the entire county. So we took that project on. So the funds would go, a lot, half the funds was go to fix the building up for the, store the toys and that. Also, we took on a food bank this year. We gives up food, and we have a little shed we store our food in now, and it's crowded. So we trying to increase that food bank, and we wants to sponsor, to get it off the ground for this year, the Toys for Tots, and that will serve the entire county. So that's one of the reasons why our increase is higher this year, and we sure appreciate you guys for your support.
What's your budget on, what's it going to cost you to fix up what you need to do?
Well, right now, we had, we had to stop, we was getting into that, but right now, our budget, we were looking at, well, I can give you an idea, because we looking at changing all the toilets in there, putting, putting up petitions in there to where we can secure the building, doors, and things like that. We was right in the process of doing that, but since what happened with the county and the fire department, now we like had a stalemate now, but I'm quite sure everything will go on as planned. Okay? Any questions, gentlemen?
I'm just, I'm trying to get, how much money is it you think it's going to take to fix what you're needing to fix?
Well, it'll take us, well, right now, I'm looking at it maybe five grands or something like that. By the time we finished it, it would be like that, something like five.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Or do you want me to? I told you what my deal was yesterday. I was at $120,000 total for everybody, and there are some new ones on here that wasn't on here. That was from the 2021 budget, and in 2022, we raised it all. It was supposed to be a one-time deal because we had the cares money, and after that, it was supposed to go back to the original funding, but now we went from 112,000 in 2021 to 153,000 ass this year.
I'm adding up my numbers. Give me one second, please.
I came up with, I actually came up with 122.5, what I had written down for all of them total.
Well, how about we negotiate and go 125?
Okay.
Total.
125 total?
Okay, how are we going to break that up?
Well, now that's where we get to the slice and the dice. Well, as you know, yesterday, I went down the list from 2021 and added in the ones that wasn't in there in 2021, and came to a total of 120. So we got 5,000 extra dollars to add to certain ones, or however you want to do it, split it over all of them, whatever.
Well, the Welborn one would only be, add on one time, Mr. Meso?
Yeah.
Next time, it wouldn't be there, right?
Well, I had 3,000 figured in theirs from yesterday.
For Welborn, I had written down 6,000.
Okay.
I think he just said five would cover him, but I had written down six.
Six.
For Vivid Visions, theirs is the same across the board. I'll just go, I'm going to, I stay with 30. 2021 budget on United Way was zero. They're not present. I had them at zero.
Okay.
I had.
Well, I spoke to Mr. Chair on yesterday, he said that 6,000 would be, they can work with that. I was going to try to go for eight, but he said 6 would work for them at the.
On which one?
On Welborn?
No, no. The PAL.
Okay, I was going, I was going from the bottom up. I was just working up, but yeah.
So you're at 6,000 on Welborn, 30 on Vivid, zero on United Way, Genealogical Society, same?
You going to make me answer all of these while everybody else sits there?
I'm just asking. Let me explain my neck.
Like, I'm here to get my head chopped off, everybody else is going to sit down there ducking.
It's just easier for me to look that way today.
Well, why don't you spin your chair around and look at that one?
He was the bad guy yesterday, Larry.
I ain't dumb enough to take that bait. I mean, he's a.
Where'd you stop at? Where'd you stop at?
We're at Swanee Valley Genealogical Society in 2021. They were at $2,000.
Hey, how about this? I just did three of them while somebody else threw the next three.
I was adding up. What, what three did you do? I'm sorry. I was adding up.
We're up to Swanee Valley Genealogical Society.
All right, what have we got there? Let me do the chamber. 25 is good.
I said PAL.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. I'm going to gabble you now. Let's go up in order. Swanee Valley Genealogical Society. They were at 2,000 in 2021.
Uh.
I'd say stay the same.
Stay the same.
Stay the same. I'm good with that.
Four Seas was at five grand.
I'm good with that.
I'm good at five.
Chamber of Commerce was at 20.
I had 22.5.
22.5.
That's, that's, I'm just one guy now. Come on.
I'm just writing, so I got it in front of me. What say the rest of you? I'm good with that.
Yeah, 22.5?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 22.5.
Police Athletic League was at 5,000.
Six.
Just want to say the rest.
I actually was asking, thinking a little more.
Well, I got the sheriff dialed in on the rest, so we're good.
That's what I said yesterday, that the sheriff gave someone yesterday.
You got that, I'm all good.
We found a honey hole in there for him, so he's good.
I mean, I was asking for eight, but I was.
Well, I know, but we found like 25 grand, and she ain't got covered over there, so.
Was it three or four?
See, she was gone. You didn't have no backup, Sam.
The answer's no.
Too late. Sam already agreed. Yeah, you shouldn't have. That's why you never walk out. Hooked on Heroes, we had 1,500.
I had.
6,000. I'm assuming on the Police Athletic League.
I'd like to stick with the three on Hooked on Heroes.
I like, I second that. Three on Hooked on Heroes.
16 on the Historical Commission.
I'm good with that.
I am. Say the rest. Good?
Yep.
This end left, left side?
Good, good. I'm good here.
Hearthstone Botanical, 2,500.
25.
You're good.
Well, I'm thinking, they were a new one, and I don't, we'll just, we'll go with that for now.
For now.
Disabled American Veterans, I'm good with 2,500.
Okay.
Arc, 30 grand. I'm good with that one.
Good with that.
Ms. Nina, have you done the math on all that?
No, I'm going to make everybody to go back to the top to the bottom of the amount.
A R C, 30,000. Disabled, 2,500. Hearthstone, 2,500. Historical Commission, 16.
16. See, I had six. I must have been married.
He wouldn't have been happy.
3,000 Hooked on Heroes. 6,000 PALS.
You can put it eight.
Hang on just a second. 22.5 on Swanee County Chamber of Commerce, 5,000 Swanee Valley Four Seas, 2,000 Swanee Genealogical, zero United Way, 30 grand Vivid Visions, and 6,000 Welborn. We're there.
500 over, but I'd, I'd go with it.
I love it when a plan comes together.
What now?
125.5.
Yes, sir.
Is everybody in agreeance on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right side?
I'm good.
We're good.
I'm good.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. We appreciate you. If you need to leave, you're welcome to leave.
Appreciate what every one of you guys do.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And that's how the sausage is made.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you, sir.
We need to move back. Did you want to speak before?
That'd be all right. About the text.
Just go ahead.
Next meeting.
We need to go back to some unfinished business, I think we've got here. I guess the first thing would be the windows at the courthouse. We need to come up with a, with a plan on that. We had a $250,000 ass. There's quite a lot of uncertainty there on really what it's going to take until we get deeper into it, so my thoughts was to fund half of it out of this year in case we need to order something or do something, and then, because the work won't be finished in this year, this budget, coming budget year, it'll probably take two budgets to get to where we need to be on that, so my, me, my idea was fund half of it in this budget year and see where we are once you get engineers or whatever we got to do with that whole, whole thing at the courthouse, and then the following year, we'll readdress it. Does that sound like a plan to you, Mark?
It's a plan.
Does that sound like a plan to the board?
Yeah.
125,000, Nina.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Was there anything else we needed to deal with on yours?
You requested information on the Douglas Center?
Yes. Yes, okay, yes, let's go back to that.
Since I'm here.
Yes, sir.
That's not, that's in the, that's in the budget. That's not on this.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, this is in the budget. The Douglas Center, we actually have money set aside now. Y'all were asking where we were, where we were trying to head towards this thing, and in the preliminaries that, I pulled new numbers yesterday, equipment costs, we've had an increase across the board of approximately 8.5% since the numbers were ran a year ago. Fortunately, it looks as if the market has started to slow down on those increases a little bit, so that's good news for us. Gives us maybe a little bit of time and not the increase that could be. We've gone from a projected 600,000 right now to a 650,000, so there's that 8.5% increase, and that is insulation, air conditioning, ductwork, electrical upgrades, all the things that come with it.
You said something about the bleachers this morning when you and I were talking.
Yes, sir.
What I came up, we had $470,000, I think, total in the Douglas Center, if I'm correct, Nina? I ain't looking at my book, so.
I don't think we're counting the bleachers.
Well, and so how much did we have in there for the bleachers?
25,000 or something like that. We're rolling that this year because we didn't want to do it.
25?
Yeah, we didn't want to do that. We're working on, we had to dismantle it if we did anything with this insulation and the upgrades.
So we're at 470,000 and we're asking for a grant, I believe, aren't we, Mr. Scott, on that thing? So I think we're pretty good right there for right now.
Where was the, uh, I remember seeing the line for 300.
There's 170.
There's 170.
That's right. I remember that now. Okay, good, good.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna hold, I, I'm gonna ask Mr. Perkins what he thinks. It's his district.
Yes, sir.
We got 470,000 set aside now for that. Mr. Mark's saying it's gonna be about 650. We're asking for a grant over here. So I'm thinking, hold tight and see where we get with the grant.
Should we, uh?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as we're gonna, you know, continue to proceed with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's, 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 me and Mark had a discussion this morning on that. There's an engineer or architect, I'm assuming, that they're trying to get together on not just this project and several other projects. So that's kind of where we're headed with that. So we really don't have anything in stone yet. It's just a work in progress.
Right.
Yeah.
So that kind of answered my question. I was, do we need to give him, or do you feel like he already has the, the, the word to move forward and go ahead? Because some of this stuff, you said it's over a year out getting the compress?
Well, um, I gave y'all the information. That was a, um, a.
Lead, lead time on it.
It's a contractual lead time on a lot of equipment. That's just select equipment and that was just for your information only. I give it to Mr. Scott also. That was a symposium that I just went to. And that was what these contractors, and these are contractors who do multimillion dollar projects. So they get at the head of the list on a lot of this equipment. But we're still looking at lead times that are six months plus out on a lot of the, on these things. And all it takes is one item on that list to hold up the whole project.
So where are we at with the arch, architect? Are we, have we hired somebody? Where are we at?
We have got, um, one gentleman that's doing some pro bono work for us right now for the grant piece. We also, the, I want to say the 17th or 19th, we, we opened up the, or the bids are due or the quotes are, qualifications are due. So for September, we'll get somebody on board with that. We, just sort of, we're talking about the grant for a second. It's due in the next month or so. We should know by the first year if we receive that or not. So we should be able to work toward this year, getting, getting some progress made on that project. What I would suggest is, since we got a pot sitting there, uh, once we get to the point where we start, we don't want to interfere with a grant or spend money ahead of time on a grant. But go ahead and get the plan together so when we get the yes, we can start moving. So, uh, I'm gonna challenge Mark to, and he's been waiting on me, so I don't want, I don't want to throw Mark on the bus, so. But we're gonna work together, get these, these projects knocked out this year.
Okay. You good with that, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir.
And, and gentlemen, just so you know, in that 650,000 was not the bleachers. That was not included in that, okay?
Well, that's why I'm not adding it to the 470. It's, it's on, it's to handle that, so.
And those bleachers now, Mr. Chairman, just was just to do repairs to or keep those same?
That was to repair the existing ones. Now, we may get recommendations from the architect to either fix those or completely change them out. We, we don't, we don't know. And that's gonna be a decision that y'all can make at that time.
Okay. We'd love to keep them, but, yeah, we will see.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lane.
Can we go back to something that we talked about yesterday? I don't know about you guys, but my phone was melting last night. Apparently, the rumor mill got started that, that the board was gonna stop giving all raises to county employees. That is not what was said. I don't know where that wire got crossed, but, uh, we're not stopping all raises. Uh, it was just a discussion. And honestly, I thought a lot about it. And I mean, the, the, the 1%, the cost of living increase, I'm good with that. I'm fine with that. Really, I guess what, maybe my lack of explanation is Mr. Hancock chastised me for was, the, the automatic of it, I guess, was my only concern. And, and maybe something more along the lines of a merit-based, annual merit-based. You know, sometimes it may be more than the 50 cent. It could be a dollar or two for any particular employee. But, but I just wanted to kind of talk about it and maybe squash the rumor that this board was stopping all pay raises. Like, I, I.
Well, I thought I made it clear yesterday that it was just a discussion. Nothing was being done at the time. We were just throwing it out there to see where everybody's at. We don't have workshops every day. So this is the only time the commissioners can get together and talk. And that's pretty much what that was. So there is a 1% longevity raise and a 50 cent an hour raise every year, automatic for all employees. It hasn't changed. It's not going to change right now. I'm not saying we're not going to discuss it and see where everybody's at on that. But I thought I threw mine out there yesterday, that at some point, at somewhere in somebody's salary, it gets, it gets, if you look at the budget on these, on the payroll that the county is facing here, it's, it's gonna become unsurmountable at some point. You, you're not taking in enough tax revenues to keep supporting all this. So at some point, I think you gotta look at the top end and you, and it becomes merit-based. The bottom end, and I don't know where that number's at. I'm not, I don't, I don't know. It's just a discussion. And at some point, we may or may not do anything. I don't know. But I, it's just, we're not doing anything right now. It's just a discussion. I just want to make that clear.
I agree. I think Commissioner Hill got some calls too about the same thing and, uh.
Yeah, Mr. Hancock?
It's not what we, the intent was.
If you go back and read the minutes, when they went from the longevity raise being given every five years to 1% a year. Now, it's in the minutes. That is not a pay raise. It cannot be, should not be considered. That was not the intention of the board at that time. It's not a raise. It's their longevity. And if you figure it all out, even with the compounding at, at 1% or at 5%, the differences are, is minimal. You're only talking pennies, our difference between it. But use the right terminology. That's what gets you in trouble. You, one board does one thing and another board doesn't. No, because new members coming on. And it creates a lot of confusion and discontent too, out there if you're one of the employees. That 1%, they're gonna get it from now on. And it is automatic, but it's not a pay raise. You're just, the reason that it was done was for retention purposes. You give them the money instead of waiting five years and working, you get it every year. Once you complete five years, if you're a new employee, you don't get it or weren't supposed to at that time. Could have changed since then, and I don't remember. But you had to be here five years and then you would get it. Or I don't know if it got changed or not. But that is, was the intent of the board when it was implemented. It's not to be considered a pay raise. Your pay raise is what you do with the 25 or 50 cents.
And, and there's multiple options there, Mr. Hancock. I'm not saying we're doing anything. But I'm telling, I run a business and I can tell you how it is with me. When my payroll exceeds what I can afford to pay, I either have to go up on my prices or I have to cut payroll and cut people and lay people off. And that's, that's just a number. I'm just saying, at some point, you're either gonna raise taxes and you're already at nine mils. There ain't a whole lot up there. So at some point, you're either gonna freeze payroll, you're gonna do something to make it work. And that's just what I'm, I'm just trying to be ahead of the curve here. We're covered. We're good. We're all good right now. But I'm looking down the road two, three, four, five years and I just see it ballooning and ballooning. And at some point, there'll be a reckoning for it. I promise you.
I just wanted to clarify that. You know, everybody says, hey, you, you, I need to sit down and shut up.
I just want to make my point clear that we are not, that we are not doing anything. It's just a discussion. That's all.
Not a problem. I just wanted you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else that, oh, I need to go back to the, uh, third cent TDC reserves. There's 155, I think, thousand in there. Is there not, Nina?
Yes, sir.
We need to do some land clearing at the, uh, the Ware property down in Brantford. Also, Mr. Fury needs to do some at the, uh, Sportsplex. And I don't know if the Catalyst site probably doesn't qualify for that, does it? So.
I don't think so.
I would like to take 75,000 out of that and move it to recreation for Jason to get quotes on the land clearing. If that's good for everybody.
All right, whatever.
Yes, ma'am. That's all we need. Mr. Scott, do you have anything in yours for covering that at the Catalyst site?
Uh, we always get creative. And it needs, it needs to happen. We preparing to the, the scope or the process preparing the scope for clearing grubbing. Backing up to the TDC funds for those projects. This is to enhance people and events coming in for tourism-related recreational opportunities.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're good? Yes, ma'am. Is there anything else we didn't cover? Anybody think of anything that's not addressed here that we've been over?
We, we need, um, Ron mostly talked a little bit about the code enforcement. Circle back to that. And I've got a couple of things after that.
Okay.
I'll be quick. Um, you know, the discussion came up yesterday in the wish list items for the additional code enforcement position. Our thought process behind that initial position was that we wanted to put that position in there at 30 hours, which would allow us to pay benefits. It does not restrict that person from just working 30, but they have to work at least 30. They can work more. What I don't really want to see is a reduction in that, where we lose the benefits. I don't think that we're gonna grasp the best possible candidate that we can have for that position. So what I would like was maybe the board to consider just moving that to a full-time position. And if we're gonna go to anything, let's go to the, the full, full-time position at 40 hours. And, and, and the rate that we had looked at was 18. If the board would consider that, I would appreciate it. I think that that would give us a little bit of leverage that we can grasp the best candidate that can do the best job for the county. If we're, if we're stuck in a part-time position with 20 something hours, you, somebody's gonna have to go home by the time they get something started. And it's just not gonna be the best utilization of those, those time.
This just looks bad on me. I just went on a rant about payroll and here we. But I'm telling you, the code enforcement is, is important.
I was, I was gonna say that there was someone's idea to put the code enforcement position on the wish.
He speak out of both sides of it.
So you want an 18 dollars an hour at 40 hours?
Correct, with benefits. So what does that look like?
Okay, instead of 30 hours at 44, nine minutes.
We just go to a full, full-time position at 18 plus benefits. If you could do the math on that, let me know what it is.
44 was 30 at 18, so.
Keith's got the computer smoking over there. Be less than 50. Well, you got, they already got the truck. Don't you already have a truck? Would this person be working in the office or?
They'll be in the field too. They'll be doing both.
Have we got vehicles to cover everything?
We'll make it work.
Thank you.
It comes to 56, 656.
So about, and we were at 46?
We were at 44.9 at 15, 60 hours.
12,000 increase.
I'm good with that.
57 even?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm, the, the board hasn't said anything. I'm, that's just me.
Okay, I'm waiting.
I, I'm okay with the full-time second code enforcement. I mean, we got, it seems like I talk to Robin three, four times a, a month on complaints and issues going on. So I think he could use some help. And I'm sure that this person could probably cross.
Use them to, uh, cross train.
Kind of help pick up some slack in other areas, maybe.
Correct. And, and, and the, and the thing is, is the, is we want Robin driving that train. Robin has developed a, a great process. Um, he's got, uh, a good thing going. And that, that person come in, he can train them to, to pick up what he's doing. And it's just gonna double our productivity.
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm good with that as well. Uh, now certainly that board is, is code enforcement board and, uh, that's not an easy task. I mean, and Sandra Grinnell and Barbara Brown was on there and they went through a lot. And there's a lot of work for them to cover in this county. But now with the amount of people that moved in, and, uh, I think that's, we need to have another person. So I agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mac didn't say nothing yesterday and really didn't talk about his department. Is he good? I mean, is, is, are we up on permitting and things of that nature?
We are. Um, we, we, we're caught up. We've had some, uh, some personnel changes in there. Um, we do have two new employees. They are, uh, they've grabbed the bull by the horn, so to speak, and have picked up things very quickly. One of those individuals has over two years' experience in another building department. So the terminology and everything's good. She's just learning the system. The other one is very energetic and has grasped everything head-on and is doing very well. Caveat to that is both of those employees are bilingual, so they have immediately made their impact in our department, um, from day one. So it's, it's really sped up a lot of productivity there as well.
Good.
Quanisha, which is our most senior position, is, her intent is to go back to school, which is gonna, uh, require, one of these individuals basically was taking her place. She's doing training now. At the end of the month, she'll leave her full-time position. We want to keep her on as a casual employee to come in and work as we would need that and be, basically be able to come in and, and assist with running certain reports and stuff. She has indicated to us that that's what she would like to do. But, you know, she wouldn't be on a part-time basis or any, would be a casual, just, you know, when we need and when, when she's able to fill in, then she can. If we got somebody out, we don't lose that productivity. But we're in a good situation there now. Mike's staying busy and of course, the new inspector, Mike Alvin, uh, is busy as can be as well, so.
Has that really sped up the process a lot?
It really has. Cause I mean, there's, I, I don't think that we, you know, just looking at the big picture of things, I don't realize how, we, we hired Mike as an electrical inspector, but there was a high percentage of the permits that were going out that were electrical based. Since that time, Mike has went to, uh, the state of Florida's mobile home installation, uh, class. So he went through the whole class that all the installers go through. So Mike is able to do those mobile home inspections now too. So that's, that sped up that too. I mean, where we're at now, uh, just in my conversations with Quanisha at the end of the week, I think we were about a week, week and a half out on permits. We do have much more permits coming in that's going out. Um, and that's because those permits are ready to be picked up and paid for. Contractors haven't picked them up. Some people are just have dragged their feet a little bit. But we have tons of permits waiting to be picked up.
That's good.
Good.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Everything's good. We appreciate it, guys.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lane.
Um, can we get, um, Ms. Nina, an update on that contingency? Cause we just made a few adjustments. Please.
1,671, 945.
145?
Yeah. 945.
So again, Ms. Nina, we'll repeat that.
1,671, 945.
945.
Okay.
Is there any money in road and bridge for paving at this point in your budget?
We've, we've got some budget for that. Also have a list. We've got two things. One, we've got a, work on a list of priorities that staff is working on, almost finished with. Uh, then we've got the list, the projects that we started with chip seal and all asphalt that's been on the list for a couple of years.
So those are, are those already covered in the budget now?
Yes, yes, those all are covered. Right.
But there's no additional money above that in, in the budget?
There's a little, but, um, not, not to do big projects.
Well, I don't know what we need to keep in contingency, but I would like to see a million dollars moved down the road paving.
We got a couple of other things that I want to talk about too, but I know roads are very important.
All right, come on.
I know you're strategic. You're learning. That's good.
I think either we got half a million contingency.
A couple, just two different things. A couple, just two different things. One is, we've got forty-nine million dollars worth of projects coming, you know, that are on us right now. I'd like to see us discuss if not to move forward on hiring a project manager to oversee those things, to look at utilities, road paving, projects, those sort of things. There's no way that I see us handling all the things without dropping the ball on some grant procedures and make sure we're on top of every project on the way. That position could be a engineer-type person. It could be somebody like with those kind of skills to look at the plans and things, make sure the plans are good, what we need. But I'd like to see us at least discuss filling a position or creating a position for that, but that's certainly y'all's call.
What, what, what kind of salary range you talking about?
I would say a range eighty-five, ninety-five. Just a, I don't know what, you know, we have to write up a job description, obviously, to look at what that would look like.
Well, it was my understanding when we hired Ms. Flanagan that she could do some of that stuff.
Yes. And she, and she could do some of that, yes.
And you got Willie Willis.
That's who I was trying to think of. I couldn't think of his name.
That, I get it, sometimes he's got a lot to do, sometimes not so much to do. Is there any possibility of using a combination of people we've already got to do, cover that?
We could, yeah, I just, my fear is, that's a lot of projects and.
It is a great deal of work.
Right. You know, and speaking for Willie, I mean, he's hired to be a CI. We can either have him CI or have somebody else, you know, another contractor come in and do that through an engineering company. Our engineers we have now are all, they can do design or CI work. Some of the projects, especially DOT projects, require a CI to be there, which, you know, the rules have changed with DOT in the past several years, so there was a certain threshold they're required to be there.
Is Ms. Flanagan qualified to CI?
I'm not sure. I think she's done some of that in the past. I'm not sure what certification she's got now, but.
To hire, because I see a lot of jobs, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you take the federal money, you can't use your CI anyway. You have to fund that.
Right. And also DOT. I know it was, was, earlier it was portrayed that Mr. Willis could do that for us for DOT, and that's not acceptable. Now, on the trail, we might could use him some on that to try to save some money. DOT has said that we might could do that on the greenway, but.
But before we approve that, or this is my thinking, the rep board can speak up if they want to, I would like to try to see what we could do contractual or.
In-house.
In-house, before we fund that.
Okay, that works.
What's the rest of you think? Just one second.
Let's hear what he's got to say.
Yeah, he's just done it for a long time.
He's a professional.
I just didn't want to cut y'all off when you're thinking process.
My amen was, we really need that person. When you've got forty-eight million dollars worth of work, you need someone that has the experience, number one, to go through the whole gamut, from the day the plans start to the day the building's done. I look at your plans. Your plans, obviously, are drawn by an architect, and most architects draw things to the extreme. So if I want an addition, and I just say I want this addition, and this is how many square feet I want, the architect's going to give me the greatest thing I can get. If I say I want an addition for fifty thousand dollars, then that architect needs to direct towards that fifty thousand dollars. I keep seeing your budgets come up for buildings, but the plans exceed the budgets tremendously. And it's because no one's sitting there saying, no, we can't do that. You need to design your buildings towards your budget, not your budget towards your building. So a construction, I call that person a construction manager, because that's what they do. They manage the project from start to finish. And with forty-eight million dollars, you need one person to do that. I need a professional to do that. Eighty-five to ninety-five might be a little light to do that in today's market. But that person will save you three times that salary.
Well, that's kind of why, when I mentioned to Mr. Scott, a contractual type basis instead of hiring an employee is, maybe can the grants cover some of that inside the grant money if you do it on a contract basis versus an employee basis?
Some of those, if you're, if you've got a CI, that can be covered through engineering. Project management, I'm not positive about that. I would guess no.
Outside will cost you twice.
Well, maybe, maybe not. Might cost you twice right now.
I can give you an example.
But if you hire somebody and put them on for twenty years, what's that going to cost you? You ain't going to have forty-nine million dollars worth of work at all the time.
So that person has to understand, this is probably a two-year deal.
Well, that's why I'm on the contract basis.
If you go out to contract to do that, it's going to cost you three times that.
Well, this is what I want to do. I want to see.
I get you. Quick example.
I won't, I, I'm about options.
Quick, quick example is a city has paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a part-time building inspector for a year, and they just finally hired someone for eighty thousand. Part, that was two days a week.
I understand where the labor market is, and my only thing is I just want to see all the options available. I'm not saying we're going to go that way, just like we didn't do the whole pay thing out blue. I'm just saying we need to look at all the options.
I'm just saying you really need a professional.
I want to do what's best for the taxpayer.
That's why I'm here for.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do.
So you need a professional that does that, not someone that does this, this, and this.
Are you interviewing?
No, sir. But I will help you write the requirements.
I realize the need, I do, and I've talked to Mr. Scott about it. I mean, it's a lot, and it's a lot really quick.
Yeah.
My thing is, I don't want to hire somebody for twenty-five years that I only need for two.
You just, that has to be in your contract, that's all. And people that review or interview for that need to know that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's possible in today's market.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
So let me ask your opinion about this. If, obviously, you're familiar with the current job market and what's going on out there. So what's your opinion on us trying to hire somebody that has those qualifications in a job description that says this is a two-year gig? I think, I mean, I don't know what you think, but I'm curious to hear it.
I'm thinking it's a hundred and fifty a year to get a qualified person.
I'm thinking it drives your cost up significantly on a long-term contract, and I think that the likelihood of attracting someone that has those qualifications on the front end, knowing that they're only going to have a two-year job, I think that potentially drives down the quality of your, either quality of your candidate or lack thereof candidates, because they say, I'm not going to do this for two years, because then in two years, I mean, I got to start over and either move my family, or I got to find another job. So I don't, I don't know that you can, I don't know that you can put an employee on with the understanding upfront that, hey, you're only going to be here two years, or three, or whatever that number is. I'm just saying.
So let me give you another option.
I'd be worried.
Let me give you my next option. You hire a contractor that specializes in that type of thing, and they don't cost you any more than what you're paying, but they get the work. So you basically have a construction management firm, and most of them are going to put a fee on top of the project, but when they're done, they're done.
So.
That's the company I came from. The company I came from, we did construction management. We started with day one, hey, I want to do a building over here. This is what I want to do with it. We worked with them all the way through the process, and our, I don't know what their fee is today. When I was there, it was eight percent, eight percent of the construction cost. So they worked from day one, but they also gave you budgets as you go along. So if something started to get out of whack, you could go, whoa, wait. You have to do kind of what you see on TV. Well, I can't give you that, so can you live with that to stay within that budget? So there are firms that will do that.
But that's back to subcontractor.
Pardon?
I mean, that's back to a contractual subcontractor, not a full-time employee though, right? Make sure I'm understanding you.
Per project, yes. You could do it per project or, and I know that this is a whole new, whole new thing for Swanee County, but a lot of counties do government work with construction managers.
I'm aware of that.
So, and they're out there, and they will, will do it.
But I think, what are you getting at now, just so I got clarity, do they do it with a full-time employee, someone they put on the payroll, or they do like maybe more, you suggested, I guess, just a yearly?
Percentage basis.
No, they're not on the payroll, they're on their payroll.
Contractor.
On their contract payroll.
I just, I'd like to direct Mr. Scott to just give us some options. If we need to reserve some money to do that with, I mean, that's fine, but I would like to see the options first.
And I'd be glad to help you with that, Mr. Scott.
There are, you can get contracts in firms or they do project managers and plan examiners. A lot of times you get, you get the architectural, architects or engineers that will come out and do, those firms will come out and do those things for you. Their firm will come out and do, make those inspections. They are kind of costly, but you can use them, they will be your project manager that will come out and do that, oversee your projects. So you can hire them versus, or going to, I like that idea of using a firm to take care of that, and they do all the staffing and all the other things that need to be done to operate that project, and they take on all responsibilities. And I'm not opposing that we do hire someone, but it will, it's going to be costly there as well, and to find someone to fulfill that. Most cases, you'll probably find a retired contractor or retired project manager to be able to fulfill that. So I think, you know, looking out there and surfing, maybe can find someone.
I mean, the ultimate to that is a design build, is where the architect and contractor work together.
Well, I don't disagree that we need, we need somebody separate from an engineer just for cost overruns, change orders. You need somebody in control of that, especially on forty-nine million dollars.
That's what a construction management person should do.
And I'm for it, and I've talked to Mr. Scott about it. Me and him's been over it a couple of times. I just want to make sure we do the right thing. We contract or we hire, whatever the case may be, we do what's best for Swanee County.
And I get, Mr. Chairman, talking about that, and you just said, what are the best for Swanee County, and a lot of you guys are in construction here more than I am, but I guess I would think this too, and I'm not, please, I'm not making any insinuation about this, but it just begs me to wonder if I had someone that was working for me and had the interest of me versus a contract guy that's, he's just here to make the money and move on down the road. I mean, yeah, he's here to save us money, but I guess we got to look at it from all angles. It's what's the investment on that person's part too, to look out for the best interest of the county.
And I just think that's where Mr. Scott comes in. He knows what he's got to do. Just put the feelers out, see what we need. What does that cost? What does it look like hiring somebody versus a contract person? Whatever, whatever works best. I realize the need. I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm just, I just want to see, I just want to see the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is a, day before yesterday, LT and I sat down, and he said there's some, some interest in, that he's heard of, that maybe another trim crew or two. So we ran some numbers, what that would look like. Another trim crew would be a four-man crew. That'd be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for four men. Equipment costs would be, purchasing not leases. Total cost with employee and equipment would be about six hundred and seventy-seven thousand a year per crew. You know, that was, that was asked about. I've got the numbers together. Again, you know, that's, that's y'all's call if y'all want to add.
How about this? How about the same deal there as well? We keep our crews we got. If he's behind, what does it look like contracting somebody to help? That's my thoughts.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing that he falls behind on, and I shouldn't say fall behind, but where his struggle sometimes is mowing. We hear that from time to time. And sometimes, as long as it's not a, you know, a safety issue, a tree on a road, but getting to some of those issues, some of those problematic trees and things seem to be put off a couple of weeks.
What I would like to see is more garbage pickup.
Roadways, yeah.
Yes. Sam, or Sheriff, I'm sorry, what does the inmate thing look like now? I mean, are we able to get more inmates, or, I don't know what we're doing there, I'm just asking.
And on the hills, not just our inmates, what about, I've never, what about DUC? Is that not an option anymore?
Yeah, we were just talking to Calvin at the county just the other day, there, when we had that, there at African Baptist Church and all, but yeah, they're, the inmates at the prison system, they're, they're kind of falling between, along with us, you know, I mean, can we get some trustees out there to help you out? Yeah, we can, you know. You know, and it, it's not like the prison system, you know, some, we've got trustees coming in, and one day they go to court, and then they're, they're either, you know, going to prison or they're, or they're getting out. So it's kind of a hit and miss with us, but to answer your question, yeah, we could, definitely could help you out with it, you know. I just don't know, I just don't know how much we could do it, but we'll definitely can, we can, we can make it work for you. I can just get with Greg and just kind of see if we can have some assigned to him, you know, the best we can.
Well, and my concern is, it's always in the wintertime when the grass is dead and the garbage, you can just see it all then.
Yeah.
This time of year, you can't see it near as much, but in the wintertime, boy, the phone starts blowing up. And you can see it, and I see it. It's bad.
Yeah, it is.
And so I don't know that you just put them on during the winter when it's cooler naturally. Right now, you've probably got problems with heat, and nobody can work in the heat anymore, but to, especially during the wintertime, to clean them all up, you know, and get it, get it ready to mow again. So I don't know, just, I'm just throwing it out there. I just get the complaints, and it's constant, and it's never-ending, and I see it myself. I've even stopped and picked garbage up myself, so I, I just really would like to see some more of that.
We talked about going out to get on litter pickup at one time, and we just hadn't got that far yet, all frankness, but we certainly can do, look at that too as an option. But if we can work with the sheriff on inmates, or trustees, I'm sorry, and we get some inmates now from the prison, we put them on one crew and put the trustees on another crew, and most of the inmates are doing garbage pickup. Sometimes they're flagging, sometimes they're doing trim work, depends on what the task is for the, for the hour, so.
And Calvin, he's in charge of the inmate crew, is that right?
He's got one of those. There's a couple of the guys that do that.
So do we need another person like that to handle more inmates to do just garbage, or?
If we did just garbage, probably so, but then we got to look at vans and things. The, and we, we've got a van now that the guy uses to do the mowing and things, the different buildings. Before we, before we jump off into that, if we can work with the inmate crew, let me, I'd circle back around on another employee to do that, because of looking at our equipment we have already. We, I think we could maybe double up on the quantity of people in the van, on the inmates, and then the trustees could be in a separate, because right, you know, there for a while it was like, and maybe losing religion, was having, you know, one, one man and one trustee. and one trustee.
Yeah.
It's like, or inmates, it's like.
Wasn't getting anything done.
No. But, I mean, that's gotten a lot better. We're getting more people, but, but let me, let, I'd rather massage that some before we say yes.
That's fine. I just want to throw it out there while we're here, we're in a workshop, so.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you just sit here while you're talking?
You'll have to go Greg and I'll, we'll see what he can help you out.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that.
Speaking of LT and his crew, I, I do remember, it just came to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but whatever the mowers or the arms on them, it seems like when I, anytime I have an issue with a steep ditch or, or, you know, they use them for tree limbs and things too, we're either down one or we don't have enough of those. How many of those do we have now, Greg?
Actually, I'm not sure. I think, I think two, one in the north part, one in the south part. Problem is the arm we bought early on was for grass, not for trees. We're in the process of trying to rectify that.
Okay, because he did mention that to me, that it was always tough to get that because it was always in District Five, but yeah.
Well, they, it slowed them down. The, the head was for grass, it wasn't for limb, so it had them so slow.
Okay.
And nobody knew. Mr. Scott wasn't aware, I wasn't aware, till I went out and talked to the guys one day and he's like, this thing's for grass. I said, what are you talking about? He said, this ain't made for this. And I'm like, okay. So I went to Greg and then we got to digging into it and sure enough, we ain't got the right attachment.
Is the tractor big enough?
The tractor's big enough, we just don't have the right head on it.
I got you. Okay.
And so we're sitting there gnawing tree branches up. It's taking three or four times as long as what you need.
So that's what's going on then. I got you.
That's one of the things that, Mr. Chairman, that LT had mentioned to me the other day when I seen him, he was talking about they needed a, that, and you had put in for the knuckle boom truck, what he had said about the mower, that mower has a, the grass has a blade in, I believe, and on that, cut the trees have a circular blade in there.
Right, there's, there's a.
A saw blade type thing.
There's a boom axe.
Yeah, I see a boom axe, yeah.
That kind of doubles, doubles up on project.
And going back to Mr. Chairman, that, stepping back a second there, you was talking about the, the grass, and I'm not sure if we have mentioned that a lot up there, came before the board. What about like adopt the highway? Will, will ever try that process?
We got, well, we don't actually have no official program. We got a lot of people out there that do it on their own. You know, I get, there's one guy down in my district that we take him garbage bags and he picks it up and I even think he hauls it to the collection site, but, you know, we got some of that going on. No official program though.
Yeah, and I've seen some, some counties have that where, either cities have it where you have a sign up and that, that family does it, and here in the city does it.
We did, we've done that years ago and it was like, like anything, it's great for a while.
Then it falls off.
Then realize, one, in all frankness, you get people out there trying to pick up garbage and the, and the people that drive down the road has no respect for somebody actually working, whether you're cutting your, cutting your ride away outside your house or, or whatever else. You get almost clipped by.
Yeah, a little dangerous.
Folks.
It's crazy.
But, but that, we, at one time, there was a program out there, I think of several different guys and, and families that did that, and it just kind of waned off. It gets old after about second or third, fourth time.
Yeah, I thought about that and maybe every year refresh it, you know, and put a new name.
The problem you got is you go out there and you pick the garbage up, you pick the garbage, and it never ends. It just never ends.
No.
And so people get wore out with that. And the only way to fix it is hire somebody to do it, get the inmates to do it. It's just, it's not going to happen on a private basis, I don't think. It will for a little while, but.
If we, if we could start a campaign for personal responsibility.
Yeah.
That, that'd be good luck with that, but, but anyway, I need to hush.
Well, and a lot of it is just, and I keep going back to it, I see it all the time. It's hauling to these collection sites. People are hauling their garbage from their house to their collection site. They don't cover it up. It blows out the truck. That's where a lot of the garbage is coming. It's not people throwing it out on purpose. It's just blowing out the back of their truck.
Right.
But that's, that's what, any, y'all, y'all speak up. If you got anything you need to deal with, there's the time to do it.
You know, what about if we did something like this, created a, a thing there for like, for school kids? Was that, what about that, maybe?
Man, I can't even get them to come to work at a nursery.
You know, make some kind of funds or something like that, make money or?
Yeah, I, I know some, some counties have a, a program on like Saturday where they be at the jail and they have duty hours. You got somebody and put them in a van and stuff. I don't know about the liability of that, but I.
As the attorney, I don't think it's the best idea.
I was gonna say. It's not a bad thing. It'd be a great thing for the kids, but it, we're in a lawyer world now.
Not just small kids, but adult high schools, you know, but maybe more stable children, you know, anyway. I guess kids that I can't.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
I understand.
What if you get hit by a car on the side of the road? I don't think that's a good idea as an attorney. I think.
Oh, it's coming, yeah.
Is there anything else? Ms. Nina, do y'all have anything else? Are we square on the numbers? We ain't got back to my million dollar worth of paving yet, but.
We haven't. We're waiting on that.
Um, there's, there's one thing I want to go back to. And Sheriff, this is going to have to do with your office.
Uh-oh. Just go on back outside.
Yeah, Heather, take a break. Um, no, I've just, in my conversations yesterday about the pay raises that last night, getting worn out from the county employees. My, my comment that I made yesterday, apparently they heard that too. The, the appearance that the sheriff's office is, is, I don't like a better word, is double dipping because the state's increased your funding on the, from six oh four to six ninety-four. So all of your guys are getting a, a state, I guess it's mandated, I don't, you're getting a raise, they're getting a raised increase from the state, funded by the state, but yet the sheriff's office guys are also getting the county's increase. So that's, I mean, you got, I kind of ran through some numbers here quickly. I mean, there's, there's, a lot of your guys are getting somewhere between, and it varies, five to nine percent increases. That's several hundred thousand dollars on the one percent and the fifty cent. It is, do you think that's absolutely necessary this year with the increase from the state that we do that? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, we talked about it a little bit yesterday, and I just think it's fair that we circle back around to it and talk about it again today.
Well, the, the problem I'm having, Mr. Lynn, is that, you know, just like I told you yesterday, I, I got two that's, you know, as soon as the FHP Academy starts, they're gone. You know, I've got a couple of other, you know, they, and then here, just like, you know, we ask them, we say, what's, you know, what's going on, you know? You, you don't like us, what's going on? No, we, we love it here and all, we just, we can't, we can't afford, you know, to get paid more in the insurance, that, them two things is, is my, that kills me, you know? And with, you know, and here again, if it wasn't for this state money, Travis, we'd still be at thirty-five thousand and FHP fifty-five. Hell, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have nobody. I mean, it's, you know, and, and then Jimmy Norris, you know, y'all, y'all, he does a fabulous job out here of promoting businesses. You know, the business, you know, when someone comes and looks at Swanee County, you know, they're going to look at the crime rate, you know? How is crime rate here, you know? I, I just, I just gotta, you know, I just gotta keep good qualified people here and it's, it's aggravating as heck to hire someone. And just like I was telling you yesterday, I got this young boy, does a fabulous job. I mean, and, and before I hired him, I said, listen, he, he was twenty years old. I said, you got any inmates that go into FHP? He said, no, I want to be right here in Swanee County. Well, guess what? They don't, they don't, he doesn't see that pay raise, that insurance money and, and well, you can't blame them. So I'm, I'm just trying to keep up with the, the state, you know, and, and keep people here and good people here. And, you know, and, and, and the guys that we got, you know, they, they deserve each, everything they get and more. And they, they do such a fabulous job for me because it's, you know, just like everybody's saying, there's more people moving in here, our, our call, call is increasing, and I hadn't asked for any, any more deputies yet, you know? It's, it's, it's coming, you know? But I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hold off on that, but, but, but yesterday, I, I, they deserve everything they get.
No, 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 and I, and I don't, I guess the seed that I'm trying to plant, and it's, you know, see what these other guys think too, is that, that, I agree with you. They deserve everything that they get. I wouldn't do what they do. But, you know, some folks are, that's their desire, just like firemen or ERT, that's, that's what they want to do. But my, my point is, look, like the chairman has said here in the past, looking forward, if, 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 if the state continues to give state raises to all rural counties, there may be a time in the future where, hey, can you help us out? And it's, I mean, you're getting it from the state and you're getting it from us to the tune of some money. I mean, at some point, again, that number starts to.
Yeah, well, just like I was saying yesterday is, is, which we talked about, the, you know, the, the capping situation and all, and.
Don't say that word.
Well, well, but what, what I, you know, what my, my thought here is, is to continually increase my, my pay, my starting salary, so I track, you know, the, the most qualified personnel that I can, not only contract them, but to keep them, you know? We, we need to keep them, you know? We, we can track all we want to, but they, I'm, I'm like a, a experienced stepping stone, you know? They go a couple of years in FHP or, or game commissioner, wherever they go, you know, to a state job, so I want to retain them. So my, my, my emphasis will be on, you know, the increase in the starting salary and to keep the, the personnel here. And here again, we'll, we'll look at the higher end guys, you know, and not to, not to punish them because, you know, just like Eddie was saying yesterday, you know, they're, they're good employees, they're, they've got a lot of experience and all, and, and they do, they do a good job of, of helping me out and so forth. So it's, I, I see what you're saying completely, Travis and all, and, and here again, I'll do what I can to help out.
Yeah, I'm not.
And then what, and what I done last year too, and, and, is we, so, just like last year, some of the, the law enforcement corrections got the, the raise, and then, but what I'd done is I, I stepped, went in my budget and gave the, the civilians some raises also to help supplement that though.
You're talking about the dispatchers and?
Yeah, dispatchers and some of the civilians. So I, so I helped them out too, you know, to help, to raise them up too, you know, out of my budget and all, didn't ask for any of y'all, so. And, you know, so, so we, you know, we, we'll see about, if we can do something similar to that this time, you know?
Right, right. No, and, and it's, it's, it's no disrespect to you or anybody that works for you, but you know, unfortunately, for us, I mean, we're tasked with asking the tough questions. If I, if I sat here and just nodded my head yeah every single time, then we'd start out the day with no money in contingency, you know? So I don't enjoy asking those tough questions, but I think for me to do the job that I was elected to do, sometimes we have to think outside the box and we have to ask those and, and, and one of my mottos is, is if you didn't say it in the meeting, it didn't happen. So when I get asked about it on the street and, and I talk to you privately or I talk to Greg privately, well, if I didn't ask it in the meeting, I didn't say it, according to a lot of people.
Can I ask a question on that? That state money that's coming to you? So far, we've got it, what, two years now?
Yes, sir.
This'll be the second year of it.
This'll be the second year, uh-huh.
So how does that work? You've already got your people up to a certain pay amount. You're still getting the money, say you get it again next year. Does that just keep that raise for those certain people? Or if you add employees, does it, do they add on for that? Is it by the person, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, you can't, you can't use it to hire somebody. If they're already in place, you can give them a raise. The, the whole thing is, is, is to bring.
Bring their starting pay.
There's twenty-nine fiscal constrained counties and we're one of them, and their whole objective is, just like I was saying, is, is, you know, if they didn't have the state money and we're at thirty-five, thirty-seven and, and, and states at fifty, fifty-five, you know, you know where they're going to go to. So that's to help us out, you know, to keep us, you know, in competition and keep us, you know, good help is, is what it's, is aimed toward. Just use it for, for, for raises.
Well, like, I mean, if you added two new deputies, I'm not saying you can use that money to hire them, but once you hire them.
Once we hire them, we could use it.
Then do they add on for those other two?
Yes, yes, yeah.
The following year.
The following year, yes. I'm just trying to get the mechanics down.
Right, yeah.
We use it for this fiscal year because you have to do a budget specific plan like at the beginning and, but then when they're hired for next year, like this year, we added the employees that were hired last year that were on the list. And so we have some employees now that were added this time. So if we were to hire somebody now.
It'll be the following year.
Exactly.
I got you.
But their starting pay would be at what we opted to the forty-seven.
Right.
Or the forty-three.
On the calls of service and the crime rate in Swanee County, where are we at?
The call for service?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I, I know it's went up.
I know I'm catching you off guard here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I know, I know it's went up, you know, but, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to put some, you know, do some, some research and see, but, you know, we could, we could give you some figures on it all. But, 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 but back to your, your, and I, and I kind of somewhat anticipated this question that you asked Travis and all, and, and what my thoughts are, you know, is to, just like I say, is help the, the guys just starting out, get them up and all, and then look at the, the higher end guys, not to punish them, you know, but just, you know, we need to, just like y'all were discussing between, with me and Eddie, you know, we got to look at, you know, you know, the, the higher end about how to kind of limit them, I guess, you know, the, the best we can, you know? But I don't want to try to punish them, but I just want to, because I see what y'all are getting at and, and I kind of somewhat anticipated this question and all, but we'll, believe me, I'll, I'll look into it and just see how we can kind of.
Yeah, I mean. Do a, do a better way. You want to retain those guys and you want to, you don't want to, like you said, you don't want to penalize them and that, that would never, my intention on the, the starting the conversation, but it's, it's, it's like Eddie knows this and, and you know it. The struggle on retention's at the bottom.
Right, right.
I mean, that's, that's where the, that's where the struggle is. I mean, once you make it to the middle top, you start to do pretty well. And then does it, does it, does it shift to merit base then? So, so, you know, I, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, and I just, and, and again, I somewhat anticipated this question and all, and, but, you know, and actually I kind of thought about looking at the higher end and just see what we can do to kind of adjust that to where, just like you say, more emphasis on the guys just starting out, to retain them, and, but somehow do it to limit the top guys, but not, not, not to punish them either.
I, I agree, it's a fine line.
We'll, we'll have to try to, we'll have to work on that and, and see, you know, because hopefully the, the state will give us this money and so forth and it, you know, it, it does to get to be a, a, some of a compression rate, you know, where you got, you know, a way higher end and the, and the lower end is not, is not getting what they should be. So we'll, we'll work on that part for.
Fair enough. I just, just wanted to kind of ask, talk about it.
All right.
Thank you, Sheriff.[1629.04] Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
And I, I was curious about that too, so I'm glad you asked the question.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one.
And I got asked a question last night, and I forgot about it, to be honest with you, so I'm glad you.
Yeah, I mean, there's just, there's just, there's some folks out there that say, hey, man, them guys are getting twice as much as I'm getting, I mean, I know that they're, you know, it's a different.
Well, I'm happy for the sheriff and what they do, but.
Absolutely, and their line of work, their line of work is a.
I hate to criticize, but sometimes I don't think they think the whole thing through. You do one department that way, and then you got, we got the rest of the county to deal with, and it creates a problem for us at that point.
I didn't realize that they had, I know Eddie's got it last year, but I didn't realize he didn't get it this year. It's crazy.
Can I bring up one more thing for discussion?
As long as it's positive.
Come on now, I don't come up here and say negative things that often.
Really?
Um, just something I heard yesterday that I'd like you to think about is the dog issue and wild dogs and, and stuff within the county. I realize that we don't have, and I don't want to call it this, but you can do whatever you want with it, we need some kind of leash law or something that says, keep your animals on your property, and if animal control picks them up and you want them back, there's a fee for that, so that we can at least recoup some of the dollars to go out there and capture animals.
I'll tell you what, you go ahead and run for office, and you can do it.
You just, you just made about forty thousand rednecks really angry.
I get where you're coming from.
Well, one of those redneck dogs came and killed four of my goats a year and a half ago.
I understand.
So.
I get it. My dog done it too, and I took care of the dog.
And I'm kind of hearing where, we're hearing people getting attacked, so are we going to wait till somebody gets killed? I, I'm just throwing it out there, I, I think.
It's the same for me, is I've been contacted about a sound ordinance, you've got to enforce that, and, yeah, at some point, maybe this county gets to that point, but right now, you can talk to the sheriff right there, he, he's wound up, he's got all he can do. How much you, how, how much service do you want to pay for?
I'm not asking for any additional service, I'm just saying, if they have to go pick animals up, there should be some kind of fee to that person.
But they don't know who the animals belong to.
But you can't do that unless you have an ordinance.
They're saying if they come to retrieve their animal, is what he's saying.
Then they'd have to pay to get it.
Do you have that, Sheriff? I mean, is there any kind of charge?
I'm just saying, there's really nothing on the books right now that says if your dog's loose, who cares?
Unfortunately, probably what would happen if someone realized there was a fee, they'd just leave them.
Yeah, we have, we have the adoption fee and all, that, you know, because we, we spare you during, in, you know, vaccine also, we got a adoption fee, you know, but far as, you know, we go out and someone has, because we've had this before, someone say, there's a stray dog, you know, at my house or wherever, we go pick it up, and it turned out to be the neighbor's dog, you know, but they'll come pick it up, but we don't charge it for that and all, uh, but we, but we do have a, an adoption fee that they, that they have to pay for.
I get it.
Here's what I was told, just shoot them. Well, I don't like shooting.
Well, I ain't gonna say nothing in front of the mic, but.
Well, that's what I was told.
I don't want the sheriff to have to come put cuffs on me.
Look like a coyote.
Just to answer your, answer your questions, uh, Chairman, calls for service, uh, as of today's date, sixteen thousand five hundred, last year at this time was thirteen three, so three thousand more than last year.
With how many deputies?
Same, same amount, well, twenty-eight road deputies.
Twenty-eight road deputies.
Yes, sir.
Lot of calls.
It is, yeah, so.
Is that animal control as well, or is that just?
No, I know, I don't include, no, that's just, that's just, yeah, so, so, and like I say, I have not asked for any additional deputies yet.
I might have stepped off in this already. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do you need animal control calls?
No.
No, I mean, we, I, we already know that's through the roof, I, I get it, I, I see it around me all the time, it's a problem.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Perkins.
Uh, to Mr. Hanekos' question there, I know that the city does charge, when you go pick up your dog from the city pound, they charge you a fee because they hauled that dog and they feed it, so they charge you a fee to pick it up. That's something that, um, animal co, animal control may want to, may want to consider is to charge if they pick up your dog, and they may want to consider having a fine, to find that person for picking that dog up, and I thought there was a lease law already in effect.
Not that I'm aware of, is there, there's not a lease law, is there?
It may be in the city, but, uh.
In the city.
In the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that's a non-starter for me, I can go ahead and tell you. Yes, sir.
I checked with the guys this morning about the paving machine, what we have is fine, the, they may try to experiment with somebody, you know, you get a loaner or something just to see how it works, but what we got right now works for us.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Is there anything else? Speaking there forever holds your peace. Oh, well, no, we got to get back to my million dollars.
I thought that's where we were going in.
Yeah, well, I was about to forget about it. I would like to move a million dollars of the contingency to road paving, that's my thoughts. I'm, what, say the rest of you.
Well, I think we need to discuss what roads are getting paid for, we can agree to give you a million dollars.
Well, we're gonna get into that.
And we need to subtract the one we didn't know about yesterday. And we got to take out the one that we found out about yesterday. I'm not agreeing to give you a million until I know where it's going.
We're just putting it in the road paving.
Negative.
We'll discuss it later.
Negative. Not taking that bait. We're gonna discuss it first.
I can agree to us doing that, but would us have an equal opportunity to get some of that money?
Well, all your roads are paved, so you don't get any.
Uh-uh, not yet, not yet.
I just gave you a brand new one.
Wait now, wait now.
I just gave you a brand new subdivision.
Hey, I got a road, I need to pay you. Now, y'all been getting roads paved, I got one, need to be paid.
I, I, I'll tell you what, what I need from you is that when I go to campaigning, I need gas money, because you took the city limits, and I took in thirty square miles.
Welcome to my world.
I got the most square miles.
I hope y'all feel the pain.
So I'm good with that, and, and I guess, let's, we can come back once we identify those roads and start talking about it.
All I want to do is just move the money so it's not sitting in contingency, it's in road paving, it's designated for that. We as a board will discuss where that money goes before it's spent.
Those two folks that were in here yesterday, Mike and, uh, Gene, they can tell you what I need in my district, but they, they know, they, they call me all the time, Commissioner, when you gonna get this road done?
Well, Don, we're, we're always in your district paving.
Oh, my Lord, here we go. Oh, Lord have mercy.
There were stops over there.
Took me seven years to get one done. Okay, so we're, we're gonna move?
Well, I'm still fighting over one that they won't even approve.
I've been here three and ain't got one yet.
Oh, stop.
It ain't, uh-uh, nothing's been done.
And honestly, y'all know how it works, I mean, DOT, honestly, y'all, I'm not joking, seven years, and they ain't even started.
Commissioner Land came in here and swat.
Oh, yeah, he grabbed two feet.
Gone. Well, he's getting his little cut through road there, that's.
It ain't been, we ain't got a right of way yet.
We done expensed the money for it.
We ain't got a right of way yet, three years later.
All right, children, let's get back at business.
You can see where a road paving gets contentious. You don't hear us argue a lot, but you hear us argue over that one.
We just need more money, and I will tell you, and I don't mean any disrespect to DOT, but there was a, there was a comment made out there on social media, and, uh, and this person was from DOT, I couldn't believe they commented, and, uh, I'll tell you how crazy it was, my wife had to call this person out, saying, you work for DOT, you know how you cut our funds and, and for our county and our.
And trust me, every time I see a senator or congressman, I, it's the first words out of my mouth, Scranton Scott, you got to fund it now.
And, but they keep cutting it.
They keep cutting it.
They keep cutting it, so, but I want the people to know that, I mean, obviously, we're doing all we can with the funds we have, and then, we just, like you say, keep pushing our senators and our congressmen.
Well, and that's where the economic development comes in, that's, you push for that economic development, that's where the new tax money comes from, you self-sustain, you, you do your own as much as you can.
As much as you can, yep.
So I just need a consensus to move that million to road paving from the board.
So, were we, were we still at one million, six seventy-one, nine forty-five?
I think nothing's changed there.
So now we're gonna go to six hundred seventy-one thousand nine left in contingency?
Is that a consensus on the million?
I'm okay with it.
Well, Travis, I think Commissioner Land's just trying to get to the, if we take the million, how much will be left?
Six seventy-one, nine forty-five.
Yeah.
And I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Contingent on District Five only getting ten percent of that million, deducting the ones we didn't know about, subtracting them.
That'll be enough.
So you're gonna isolate the roads per cost before the tentative hearing, or we're just gonna transfer a million to one line?
Just gonna transfer a million to one line, and then, when we get to that slicing and dicing, we'll figure it out.
And, and it will.
Is that legal to do?
Yes, yes, that's a.
I just want to make sure the sheriff ain't coming up.
If you, if you slice and dice, everyone's got to be frank of it, instead of it rolling into an operating type budget.
I just want to secure a million dollars, however you need to do it, Ms. Nina, is fine with me.
Okay.
But it doesn't need to go anywhere else but the road paving.
But to road paving.
Correct.
And with border.
Identifying the projects, um, and, and talking about that, uh, I know with the, and I like that the chip seal roads are good, I know we, I think the asphalt issue is just getting the asphalt, but I don't know, how do we streamline some of these projects and speed up that process? Is there any way to do that? Stop rain and have more guys doing the job. I'm talking about the companies, the company that we deal with, and how they infrequently come to visit us to, to handle these projects. Just, it is what it is, okay?
It's for us, right?
It, it, yes, the, the, but we're finding from, again, Gene, Gene brought to the table, and that's doing some of these small roads paving them instead of asphalt or chip seal them, as costs are comparable, and we got a better product when we get done, so we may transfer, you know, one, going forward, there may be more we can do, but again, we don't need to get in the paving business, because we just need to be able to do some small stuff.
Well, long roads, you, you know, that takes a lot of time, like you say, the shorter roads, we can do with the asphalt paving box, our crew, it's just gonna be a mix and match, I think, is what you're gonna have.
And, you know, this, this coming year's gonna be, uh, end of this year, and then the next year's gonna be a good test for us to see how that works, uh, just so, while we're talking about paving, our plan is to finish up, uh, the pay, the chip seal and on railroad, shift over to, uh, Downland Park area, there's a couple of little small